He has had PET scan. Really?
And he's never had a cancer scan. He had an EGI scan. And so when they want me to compare them, they're not the same. So he didn't compare them, so he had to treat this one right.
I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council for October 21st. And I'll be leading us, first at the outset, council members Holt, Gardner, and Williams have all notified that me that they will not be here. So we are down to five. So no two people can leave the room at once or we'll have to put it on pause. But I will be leading the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to do the people's business. I ask that you grant us the wisdom and the knowledge to make those decisions in the best interest of those that we represent. And I pray that you'll bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first thing is special guests and announcements. And we have the employee of the month, which will be Kyle Tyler. Come on down here. Hop up here. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation for everyone here. Office of the Mayor proclamation naming Kyle Tyler as the Mayor's Employee of the Month for September 2019 and declaring October 25th, 2019 to be Kyle Tyler Day in the City of Mammell. Whereas Kyle Tyler has dedicated 12 and a half years to working for the Mammell Parks and Recreation Department as an operator, where he is described as a jack-of-all-trades, making him valuable team member to the department's success due to the complexity of projects that are undertaken. Whereas Mr. Tyler always displays a positive attitude and keeps the morale lifted among everyone in the department. And whereas he most recently stepped up, taking initiative with the lead position on several important construction projects underway, including the construction of the haunted house and the installation of the irrigation project at Lake Willistee, successfully keeping those projects on schedule while maintaining all other job responsibilities. Whereas Mr. Tyler's initiative in these projects has allowed senior staff to focus on other projects with the Parks Department. And his attitude and ownership of tasks sets the example for the other employees in the department. Now therefore, I Caleb Norris, Mayor of Mammell, on this 21st day of October, do hereby declare Kyle Tyler to be the Mayor's Employee of the Month for September 2019 and hereby proclaim this Friday, October 25th, 2019, to be Kyle Tyler Day in the City of Mammell. So, thank you very much. Be sure you let everyone know that it's your day on Friday.
Thank you.
Next up is the approval of the minutes for October 7th, regular council meeting. Y'all have received a copy of those in the packet. If there's no suggested edits, I'd entertain a motion to approve. We have motion in second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I have not received any public comment cards, so we'll move on to the financial statement review. Ms. Vega.
Good evening. This time we're going over the September financial statements. Our fund balance comparison, the sanitation fund is 1% over budget and the street fund is flat to budget. The general fund is up 6% over budget and we have $3.6 million more than ordinance 438 requires. The city's general fund revenue is down 3% to budget and up 1% to prior year. County millage is up 3%. County sales tax is up 2%. City sales tax are down 1% compared to prior year. However, comparing it back to 2017, we're up 13%. 2018, we had, the state had some sales tax audits that we benefited from. Police and fire, the half-cent sales tax revenue, year-to-date, we've collected $861,000. This is the first month that that half-cent has a comparison to last year. So for the rest of the year, I'm going to do that by month. And this year compared to 2018, for the month of September, we're up 20% over prior year. Franchise fees are down 1% to prior year. And that's a good number because it was at 4%. So maybe we're making up some ground. Overall, street revenue is up 4% over prior year. County millage is up 6% over prior year. State turnback is up 2% and street aid is up 5% to prior year. For the sanitation fees, they're up 78% over prior year due to the switching to central Arkansas water. August was the last month that the city billed for utility billing. September was the first month that CAW took over, so next month we'll be able to have a month-to-month comparison for that. The street general fund expenditures, overall general fund expenses are down 10% to budget and up 9% to prior year, primarily due to police and fire. And that would be their additional personnel and the loss of revenue in the police department for K Mac Village. Administration is up 8% to prior year, and this is due to additional personnel in the Mayor's Department and pension for the former mayor. Public Works is 10% under budget and 8% under prior year due to personnel reallocations, fuel, grounds, and building maintenance. Parks are 8% under budget and 9% above prior year, and this is primarily due to the Rolling Oaks facility and the increase in electricity across all facilities. Senior services are 12% under budget and up 10% over prior year. This is due to personnel, the cost of concession supplies and electricity. City services are up 59% to prior year, and this is primarily due to the bond refunding. We paid our payment, we made our payment that's normally in October, in September to get ready for the bonds. And as y'all approved last council meeting, we had that additional payment for when the new bonds close. This pie chart shows the departmental expenses in relationship to the general fund expenses for year-to-date 2019. The city should have used 75% of their annual budget and all expenditures are under 75% in all departments. The street fund expenditures are 27% under budget and 29% under prior year. Personnel is 3% over prior year, and this is due to employees' reallocation. Operating expenses are 56% under prior year, and this is due to unreimbursed expenses due to the interchange design. Sanitation expenses, personnel is 6% under prior year due to the reallocation of employees between Public Works and sanitation. And operating is $16,000 over prior year, and that's primarily due to vehicle maintenance and tipping fees and the professional fees for CAW. Any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Ms. Vega, how long will we see the employee reallocation variance?
Till the end of the year.
Just until the end of this year?
It's gonna lag the whole time.
Okay. And it looks on the initial balance sheet that our expenditures are heavily exceeding our revenues. Is that something to be concerned about?
They are not. I think that, I'll have to get back with you on that. I don't have the financials in front of me.
I just wondered if there's, is there any reason for us to be concerned about our budget at this time?
No.
Feeling pretty comfortable?
No. I do know that Public Works, they have some projects that were left over from 2018. They're, are closing in 2019, and that's about half a million dollars. Maybe more like 650.
We don't carry over that budget from year to year, do we?
Only if the project has been started in the prior year, then it carries, the budget carries over. What actually happens is the PO carries over.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
Motion to approve financial statements for September.
We have a motion in second to accept the financials. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
So moved.
We have motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. With that, we will move on to unfinished business. First of all, as I mentioned in email resolutions, 2019-31 and 32, I should have marked as deferred still until the meeting following the planning commission. So that'll put us on the third reading of ordinance 986, amending certificate pay for uniformed officers. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could read that by title only, please.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, in ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 986 and ordinance amending the procedure for determining certificate pay for uniformed employees of the police and fire departments and for other purposes.
Outstanding. So this is the third reading. It's been on, obviously, two others before this. Suppose that's the way it works. And this goes back to an old ordinance that said that the certificate pay had to be set by ordinance. And so we're changing it to be able to be set by resolution. And then we've got a resolution that we told you about following up. If there is no discussion on this, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance 986.
Motion to approve ordinance 986.
Second.
Motion in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk Treasurer, a long call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapprazan?
Yes. I feel like you should call more names, but with the absences, that's it. Motion carries, ordinance 986 is approved. This will bring us to resolution 2019-34 under new business. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2019-34, a resolution to modify the schedule of compensation from the City of Mammell for police officers and firefighters for certificate pay and for other purposes.
So the numbers in the resolution are the numbers from this year's budget session. If y'all may recall, last year, for those that were on the city council, on June 4th, the fire department had a request for a new training chief, a new firefighter, and what amounted to, for last year, $6,240 in paramedic stipend for their paramedics. At the following city council meeting, the, and this was immediately following the passage of the public safety tax, which is that half-cent sales tax that replaced the community service fee. The following city council meeting, the police department came in and requested two new sergeants, two new officers, to fill that seat. And they discussed increasing the certificate pay by $6,125. I had to go back and watch that council meeting to figure out what had happened. The, there was supposed to be a second resolution that was drafted but never ran. In that council meeting on June 18th, we had discussed it would be coming back up at the next meeting. So that'd been the first July meeting. It was never brought back up and there was no discussion about it until the budget time. And then during budget process is when the council appropriated the funds to increase the police department's certificate pay, kind of pursuant to the request that Chief Williams had made at that time. And I bring that all up because I'd received a few questions about how we were coming up with this or why we were making these changes. At this time, this resolution represents the certificate pay that's been paid out this year. So this isn't us changing it right now. This is us, it was sort of changed in the budget session. So I'm open for questions, comments, concerns. Councilmember Scott.
You know, it happened at various times, so I had an unclear recollection of what the sequence of events was on this. But when you look at it like this, you know, when you talk to one group or another group, you know, we gave the paramedic pay, we had a couple of additions to staff, we gave the certificate pay, we had a couple of additions to staff on the other side. And that seems fair and equitable, given the amount of budget, 6,240 for fire, 6,125 for police.
And let me clarify, that was the amount for mid-year for last year, so it'd be roughly double that?
Yep, for both.
For the full year.
For both or for just the?
That was for each one for six months.
Okay, all right. Okay, so anyway, it seems like we're trying to be fair and equitable between the departments. But when you see it listed like this, where certificate pay for an advanced certificate or a senior certificate is half, you know, for fire than what it is for police, it's just kind of glaring, even though we did the pay for the paramedics. And I'm sure that we're trying to be fair and equitable across the, across the board. So I would just like for us to, you know, during our discussions, understand how advanced and senior certificate pay differs from one department to another and why they shouldn't be equally compensated or, you know, I'm, it's just, it's just a question.
So what was the question? Why are they treated differently?
Yeah.
So I think the easiest way is, I'm gonna try and paraphrase what the chief of police had said, and I don't recall if it was at the budget meet, or at the council meeting, the budget meetings, or just through my discussions, but this is my best attempt to cover that up. His issue was, when he was coming and asking for it, was that the, by creating a paramedic stipend for those paramedics that obviously went to extensive schooling to get that license, is it provided a way for some of their uniform, for the firefighters who really wanted to excel, to take this extra training and go down that path. And it helped provide a financial incentive for that. And so what Chief Williams was saying was that there wasn't an equal opportunity within the police department for advanced training for his officers that were trying to excel in certain things. And so he'd mentioned that the detectives, for example, make the same amount as the officers of the equivalent rate, whereas some departments have a change there based on training. So what he was focusing on is just trying to prevent, provide a way to recognize those people in the police department that were willing to sort of go the extra way. And it came about through a certificate pay. I've talked to a few people, I, and I think I've talked to some of the firefighters, is that there's been a little bit of frustration, I think, by both sides, that when one side asks for something, the other side comes and asks for the equivalent. It's, I think it's frustrating for every, everyone involved. And part of it, in my opinion, goes back to the time when they were one department, and there's still some people there that were part of the Department of Public Safety. And I'd like to get to a point where each department was just looking at those things that affected them, the public safety from their perspective, their uniformed officers. But it seems like at least once a year, we've got one side looking across the table at what the other side's getting and understandably wanting their part as well. Does that, I think that was the best way. I don't think, to clarify, that there's, I have not been made aware of any significant difference between the advanced certificate for police and fire within, for all I know, it may be more difficult to get the fire certificate. I don't know.
All right. On this one, I want to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, so this is retroactive to January 1st.
Well, this is in place now.
It's already been in place and they've already been receiving this pay, is that correct?
Correct. And somewhere along the way, we stumbled upon an ordinance that wasn't codified but was referenced in the, I want to say the personnel handbook, and HR brought it forward, I think is the history on that. The city attorney may know it better. And then we found the ordinance and said, oh, it's supposed to be set by ordinance.
Okay.
And so as soon as we recognized that, we went to the process of going, well, ordinance isn't the best way to do, in my opinion. It'd be through resolution, but we had to undo the ordinance that set it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there any further discussion on this issue? If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2019-34.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. If there's no discussion, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Resolution 2019-34 is adopted. And we will move on to resolution 2019-35. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, resolution number 2019-35, a resolution authorizing the marketing of a deed restriction on limited city property located in the White Oak Bayou watershed wetlands area.
All right. So I am going to take a stab at trying to explain this, and then we'll have the folks get up, then we'll explain it inevitably better than I do. But, but long story short, the city owns a number of acres in the wetlands. Whenever, whenever someone is seeking to impact some of the wetlands, sometimes you have to deed restrict or set aside another percentage of acreage. What I'm seeking to do is, and I'm laughing because I should have just let other folks explain it, but I'm seeking permission to deed restrict up to two acres and then to basically sell or exchange those mitigation credits to another entity for economic development. And with that, what I'll do is just bring up Judy Wright quick. How many, I believe y'all have heard about the site certification program? Have we talked about that much? This is something Ms. Keller has been working on for a while, so I'll let her give a stab, and if she'd like, bring up Mr. Murphy with energy.
Judy Keller, Director of Community and Economic Development, and I'm really excited to share this with you because we have been working on this since last year. We actually thought when we started, we would finish it last year, but it's complicated. So this is a program that Entergy's Business and Development Team offers to communities that they service. So Chris Murphy is here with Entergy and Greg Phillips, GB Mac, who is the wetlands expert. So they are both here to answer any questions that I can't or to elaborate if I don't give you enough information. So thank you both for coming. So like I said, we started this process last year. It's the 121 acres in, at the Endo Champs Boulevard that belongs to HE Properties LLC. So we approached the owners and we asked them if they would go through this process. It's not an inexpensive process. So we started it in September. The property owners have already spent $18,000 for all, I'm gonna read these to you because I don't want to miss anything. So they have, they've paid for a phase-one environmental study, an archaeological phase-two with site markings, waterway site screen, jurisdictional determination of wetlands and streams, and a section 404 application to mitigate wetlands and streams. And that's what this resolution is for, is to, they can't use our wetlands for this process. They have to either own them or have deed restriction rights to them. And so we don't think they need two acres, but we're asking for up to two because the Corps is reviewing the application and their figures could be slightly different, but we think it's more like 1.2 acres. So the importance for this is that there are only six certified sites in the whole state. There's one at the port, one in Russellville, one in Newport, West Memphis, Magnolia, and Paragould. So this will be one of two in central Arkansas. And a lot of the requests for information for a site, they want central Arkansas because of the location. So this, this will be a big deal if we can get this site certified. And this is one of the last steps to get it done. Like I said, we've been working on this for quite some time. The property owners have spent almost double what they agreed to at the beginning. They see the importance of this, not just for them, but for the City of Mammell, for economic development. If, I just want to read some site consultants' comments that Entergy provided about certified sites. "We prefer shovel-ready sites, but few are ready now. If the site does not have a phase-one analysis, we throw it out." That's what one consulting group. So they, they look for reasons to throw sites out, and this will help us make a shortlist. Another one said, "Number one thing that impresses me is being prepared. Respond quickly and professionally with the facts." And so this will give us a three-inch binder full of all this data that some of that that I just named, plus a lot more. It just gives us all a leg up when we have a site request. Another one said, "The LM Glass Fibers project timeline was expedited, and it was imperative that candidate communities had prepared sites in order to successfully compete. The fact that Little Rock had done their homework via Entergy's select site program gave them a real competitive advantage." And the last one is, "This fact is clearer than ever as significant site location evaluations increasingly rely on certified sites as key input for shortlisting sites and locating high-impact projects." So it's really important that, I mean, this is a big deal for us to have a certified site. It's 120 acres. That's not all buildable, but there's a significant amount that is. There are wetlands and streams and archaeological sites on the property, but Entergy has gone above and beyond. They've laid out a couple of different possibilities for buildings, avoiding those archaeological sites and, and the wetlands and streams. But there will be some fill in the wetlands, and that's what this mitigation process is about. The city has over 70 acres of wetlands. It'll still leave us plenty if we ever have a project. So it's a great thing. I'm excited about it.
What's the acreage, do you think, that's buildable or usable for a project?
Chris, do you remember?
Not off the top.
Okay.
I would say at the end of the day, you probably have 90.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'm just looking to see, and I did want to mention that Entergy has put in a lot of hours on this, and they have spent $3,000 in addition to paying for drone footage of our entire industrial park, because they'll do a video. When you go to Arkansas Site Selection Center's homepage, it says view certified sites, and at the bottom, it has the six, five that are in their service area. And so our site will be one of the first ones that's site consultants see.
It will be lucky number seven.
Yes, lucky number seven. And I can't emphasize enough how much Greg Phillips and his team have done. And he reminded me that he is getting paid by the property owners, but he's gone above and beyond. He's giving me Wetlands 101 because I didn't know very much about wetlands. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate their help. And part- And part of the owners on this property actually donated these wetlands to us several years ago. So it seems fitting that we work with them to get this site certified.
Councilmember Scott?
Well, this sounds exciting.
Yes.
And I guess my question is, we have some deed restricted wetlands. This does not impact our deed restricted wetlands?
That would be a Greg Phillips question. Can you come up here, Greg, I'm sorry, they won't, won't you up here too? Speak into the microphone. Thank you.
This area is just north of the currently deed restricted wetlands that the city has. This is the, the property that used to be what they called the 640-acre joint venture that Yellenich and several other local property owners had an actual mitigation bank. And when they decided to part their ways, they donated what was left to the city and the Corps rendered the mitigation bank part of that kind of null and void. But the wetland acreage is still owned by the city. And it's just kind of, it abuts the area you're talking about, but it's not deed restricted.
Mr. Phillips, I'm sorry, we need your, your name and address for the record.
Oh, sure, it's Greg Phillips. And I'm with GBMC and Associates, which is 219 Brown Lane in Bryant, Arkansas. 72022.
Thank you.
So this will have no adverse impact on the body of the wetlands since it's mitigated? Since it will be mitigated?
That's correct, in fact, this is, since this will actually create a deed restriction on however many acres it is, 1.2, up to two acres, it'll just further protect that.
Those were the words I wanted to hear.
You bet.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I, I don't vote for anything unless I understand it. Let's, let's kind of break this down to elementary parts here, I don't understand a lot of this deed restriction and all this business. Let me see if I got this straight, somebody's interested in some land that's owned by somebody down at the end of Champs Boulevard. Is that correct? And it's like 121 acres, did you say?
It's 121 acres and we don't have a prospect currently. This is to get the site certified so, so that when there is a project, we don't, they don't have to spend a year going through all this that we did so that the property is ready for their project.
Okay, and so we've got, the city owns some, some wetlands.
That this group donated to us several years ago.
And so basically, there's all this mitigation, it's kind of like carbon credits and that sort of thing in the world to where by these two acres, it gives them some credits to where a new buyer of this land could, could fill in some wetlands, is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay, so, so in some ways, so somehow or another, the city is going to donate?
No, we're not donating it, we, we will make an agreement with the property owners that when they sell, this is according to, to the mayor, that we will ask for payment when they sell the property.
Okay, we would be selling the property.
No, we'd be selling, you want to explain what you?
We'd be selling the deed restriction. We'd restrict our, the city's property in the wetlands by deed. And then they could use those, what I'll call credits, I don't think there's a bank, but they, in other words, if we preserve a certain amount of the wetlands, it gives us credits that they can use to develop, I believe 0.6 of an acre is the amount that they're looking for, so we think it, once all said and done, it wouldn't be more than two acres on our end.
But basically, then this packages up this land where somebody could buy it and they could fill in whatever they wanted and do what they need to do.
Well, just that six tenths of an acre, it's, it's specific, they can't fill in whatever they want, there's a specific spot that they can fill.
But there's a crucial area in that 121 acres.
It's in the center, yes.
That's in, that's in the wetlands, okay.
And there's some stream mitigation too, but they had a, a permit earlier and those stream mitigations are still good for that, so they don't have to worry about that. But this 0.6 acres of wetlands right in the center of the property, that's what this will do.
And what does, what does Entergy have to do with all this? What, what are you guys doing, are you, you?
I might can answer that.
Community development or something, economic development where you all try to, to get this?
It, it's a team at Entergy called, it's the Business and Economic Development Team and they work with communities. When I, when we have a site visit, like this, site consultants are coming on November the 7th, Chris is going to be out here to help promote that property, we're going to show that property. Yes, they, it has to be an area they service and so they want communities to prosper, they prosper, we prosper, the property owners prosper.
Where, where do we own all of our wetlands?
Well, here and there. I think the bulk of the wetlands, at least in the middle part, is owned by the city. But the person that would know actually most about the wetlands that we own would be Mr. Phillips. But let me, so when, when this process started, I thought, how cool Energy's got this site selection process and, and I thought it just was the equivalent of a, I don't know, premier listing on a Realtor's website, I didn't really understand the value that it brings. The, the fact of the matter is, all these steps that we've been going through and that Judy's been working on for the last year is the stuff that, that makes the project more shovel-ready to begin with. So currently, if someone were to have bought this land before this process, they'd buy the land and then they'd begin this year-long process, or maybe shorter, but this really long process to try and make sure that they could develop on the land the way they wanted, that, that it all, that it met all these criteria. And so Entergy has put forth this process where we can knock some of that stuff out on the front end to make that, that piece of land a little more attractive. Madam City Attorney, you hit your button, did you have a response to something here?
I, I wanted to try to explain a little bit more about what the resolution does because it authorizes the mayor to, for, for this deed restriction property right to be marketed. So there, it will be publicly noticed that it is, it is being marketed, the deed restriction on these, this area of property. Certainly, this is the impetus and this is the project that we have in mind, but I, I didn't want you to think that we are closing it only to this one property owner. We would, of course, look at where is the biggest direct economic impact to Mammell. We would look at, you know, the future economic benefit to Mammell as well as whatever direct compensation we could receive as a result of increased values and those kinds of things. So it is a property right, so it is going to be publicly noticed. And there will be, if there's another property owner in the watershed that wants to make an offer on that deed restriction, they would be permitted to do so.
So the bottom line, we'd be selling a deed restriction for this. So we would get something for it, we're not donating it.
Yeah, exactly, well, so, and, and the way I came up with what I think the best value is, is, is whatever the value of that six tenths of an acre is, I think our mitigation's worth half that. In other words, they're providing the, the six tenths of an acre, we're providing the ability to develop that. So in my opinion, we're providing half the value of that land, whatever that total acreage sells for per acre, we'd want the value of half of six tenths of an acre, i- is how I came up with the number that I was using. Which is a little bit ironic because what we have, we're selling back what they donated to us, pretty much. But nonetheless, as soon as it's donated, it becomes.
We knew you wouldn't donate it to them. I knew you wouldn't donate it.
All right, that's, I think that's all I've got, I'll, I'll probably go along with all this.
Council, Councilmember Tierney?
A question and a clarification, you talk about high-impact projects, what kind of projects?
Well, it could be a Kimberly-Clark, it could be a Molex, it could be manufacturing, but only light manufacturing because that's all we allow. It could be a distribution center. Yes, absolutely, it's industrial.
It's in the industrial park.
And so just as Mr. Mosley was saying, just to make sure I got my, my head wrapped around it.
Sure.
We're authorizing the marketing of a deed of city property in the White Oaks Bayou, but the city will preserve up to two acres of deed restricted lands and then we'll be marketing the land that was donated to the city and that's going to.
Only up to two acres of wetlands.
So we're marketing a deed restriction, okay? So what a deed restriction is, is if we, it's just a document that says, we're going to file this at the Court, Plaski County Court Clerk's office that says for, with respect to this particular parcel of property, it can't be, you know, developed for any other purpose. And it's in favor of this permit number. So you have to have a permit to develop wetlands, so the deed restriction names the permit that that deed restriction benefits. It only took me two or three days to learn this.
So they'll be donating to us a small parcel of land and we're going to put restrictions?
Well, they already donated it to us, so it's, it's currently city property. What we would be doing is marketing that deed restriction. Whose number, whose permit number are we putting on this restriction that we're going to do to preserve these lands? And, and that has value, so that is what would be publicly noticed.
So the city will still own the land, but for, if it's 1.2 or two acres, it can't be used for anything else, it will be mitigated so that they can fill that six tenths of an acre on their property. And they'll apply for that mitigation. But we'll still own the land, we just can't use it for anything else.
We're not selling the deed, we're not, we're not selling the deed, we're selling the, the restriction, the benefit of that deed restriction.
You're welcome.
So you, there's, there's nobody particularly behind you trying to sell this to?
That is not correct, but our, our ordinances require that we can't just pick Joe Bob and sell Joe Bob something.
So there may be somebody that's looking at this, is that right? I mean, this economic development stuff is also cosmic and also secret and so weird and it just, it always bothers me, so. You know, you, you can't tell me if there's somebody actually looking to buy this?
Well, there may be, I don't know of anybody at this moment in time that's looking at this. All we're trying to do is get it certified so that when people are looking for a site, we've already done all these things that will give us a leg up. So we get eliminated a lot because the site is not shovel-ready.
Idea is to be competitive with other sites.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Seven of them you said that are similar.
Well, this will be number seven, but only the second one is central Arkansas. So it, we, I wish we had one.
So all these.
And we don't mean to be secretive.
All these seven entities aren't particularly tailoring something for a particular entity.
No, some of them are heavier industry, like, one of them's at the port. So they, they can take a lot heavier there than we can here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. The way I'm understanding this, and maybe this will help, even if you have to correct me, is in the first place, if you fill in wetlands, you have to either purchase or acquire other land to replace it, okay?
Wetlands.
Yes, wetlands.
In the same, by, the watershed, the same watershed? In 2008, I think they passed that so that you couldn't just get one from someplace else in Arkansas, it has to be in the same watershed.
Correct. Now, the way I view this is we are guaranteeing a particular site the ability to reclaim this land so that they can fill theirs in. Is that right? It's like a guarantee. If you buy this property, we're guaranteeing that you can fill in a certain portion of it.
Well, they'll have a permit already. And so when they sell it, Greg? Okay. That permit goes with the property.
Of course, they're not going to use the word guarantee, but effectively, that's what we're doing, right? Which makes the property more attractive to, to be filled in, more attractive so that we can sell it and develop economically that property.
If they have to do the wetland mitigation and get the Corps permit, it will take so much more time that they'll say, okay, that site's too difficult, we're going to an easier site. If everything else meets their needs.
Right, and if it meets their needs, they can buy it. And we've already stated, if you want to fill that in, we've got some property here that's already.
Well, they'll already have the permit, yes.
Is that correct?
It's pretty close.
I don't have two or three days to learn on it.
I understand.
I'm still learning, it's interesting though.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-35.
We have a motion to end the second, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, and if you'll just go to arkansassiteslection.com and you'll see the certified sites and the, the videos they have, and we'll have a video like that, they've already done it, so hopefully there'll be a release of that soon, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Murphy, for coming down. Next order of business, I'm going to open up the public hearing and then we'll have the first reading for Resolution, or the, the only reading for Resolution 2019-36. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, can you read that by title only, please?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, A Resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2019-36, A Resolution Approving and Certifying the Amount of a Lien to be Filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector Against Certain Real Property in the City of Mammell, Arkansas As a Result of Grass Cutting Expenses and Abatement of Other New nuisances and for other purposes.
So our city, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our city code has a nuisance abatement process whereby in certain situations, the, we can go in and, and basically, well, essentially mow as we've done here and then we file a lien on that property for the repayment, the amount of the lien that we're requesting is $227.60 if, I got that correct. And you'll see an invoice in the back, this is a property that we had, very unique situation and so Public Works went out and mowed that, and so we're seeking that lien. Councilmember Mosley?
What, what was the situation, have we ever, have we ever even done this before?
It wasn't done under, when, when I, under Mayor Watson, didn't want to have Public Works go out and pull them off of their task to do that, and then while we talked about it come budget time, it was never put in as appropriations to be able to hire it out to a third party so as to not burden Public Works. In this case, I want to say it was, do you remember?
Yeah, I, you want me to just kind of give some background on this? So this particular home and lot is owned by the Veterans Administration. It's a, been in foreclosure for a while, it's been vacant for a good period of time. I originally contacted the VA and they said, oh, we don't own that, and then I, so we went and pulled all of the documents where it was deeded to them and I sent them, to them and said, yes, you, you do own it and it has to be maintained. And that, you know, that you're dealing with the VA, so they, they're not, they're not going to come mow the grass. So, you know, it sat there for a good period of time, it's, it's not the same as when you're dealing with one individual and I can bring them to court and, you know, get them repeatedly fined until they go ahead and get their grass cut. So this was a situation where we, we eventually had to do something, you know, this, and I know it seems like a very large bill for grass cutting, it really was not just grass cutting. If you'll look, it was two hours for three people, so we're talking six hours worth of labor with a motor, a truck, a weed eater, a blower. I mean, they were clearing out a lot of growth that had built up over a couple of years, really. Everything, whole place. So that was the reason this was different than what we would normally do with just a regular, you know, property owner. Usually a bank is going to take a little better care and, but this, there've been some disputes with this particular piece of property and that's how it wound up in this situation.
Every year, we have maybe two or three properties where it's just a mess. Every year, we have maybe two or three properties where it's just a mess as to figure, whether they're in foreclosure or the bank owns it, but it's a bank out of Hawaii and they're like, we're not mowing. So, every year, there's a few properties that are just real troubles. Huge time sink for code enforcement is they're negotiating with bankers and stuff to get the lawn mowed, so. And I think we have another one beginning to go through this process or about to go through this process, is that right, Mr. Carter?
Maybe resolved.
Maybe resolved.
Motion to approve resolution 2019-36.
We have a motion and second. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this? Let the record reflect, there's no one from the audience to speak on this. Councilmember Scott?
I was just curious. I thought that when people got really behind on their garbage bills, that we used to put liens on properties kind of routinely. Is that different from this?
We have, you're talking about, yes, so annually, we'd send to the county assessor's office liens. This is, this is different.
Oh, okay.
This is...
I wondered why we're doing this as a resolution and the other ones, we just kind of lumped them all together.
Yeah, there's one resolution. So, North Little Rock, for instance, runs every month. They've got a list of them that they're abating. We're able to handle most of ours through the hard work of code enforcement and the prosecutor's office or city attorney's office. So, every now and then, there's just this weird one.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution 2019-36. Is there any additional comments on that? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that there's an administrative fee of $25 for this. Now, I know I have been involved before I retired in some cases where there were liens put on properties, and it seems to me that there was a $25 filing fee for the lien and then there was an additional fee of $25 to remove the lien once it's resolved. Is, is this $25 all there is? Does it cover both? Or was that a special situation? And I'm confused.
I think the $25 lien is, is the filing, filing fee. I modeled this after North Little Rock's documents and resolutions. I'm sure you're surprised, I did not reinvent the wheel, but I believe that's just the cost to file the lien.
Okay, and you don't know of any costs for, for...
I'm not aware that you have to pay a fee to remove the lien.
Okay.
If we do, then we'll have to consider that in the future.
Okay, okay. Just curious question. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution 2019-36 say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The next order of business is resolution 2019-37, certifying the taxation rate for the tax year, for the next tax year. Madam City Clerk, if you could read that by title only, please?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2019-37, a resolution certifying to the Plaski County, Arkansas County Clerk, the rates of taxation to be levied by the City of Mammell on taxable real and personal property within the City of Mammell, Arkansas, for the tax year 2019 and for other purposes.
This is our annual certification that we send to the county clerk. This is not an increase, a decrease. This is exactly what it was for real property last year. If there is no discussion on that, entertain motion to approve.
Resolution 2019-37.
We have a motion and second and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Resolution 2019-37 is hereby approved. Couple of things I wanted to point out. Y'all may have seen on social media today, maybe did, maybe didn't, the revenue office will be moving to 90 Lake Point Place as of next week. They'll be there, they'll be closed Monday and Tuesday and reopen in their new venue on Wednesday. That is the old Mammell Water Management Building across the street from Academics Plus. That's where they will be camped out until the conclusion of at least Phase One of the City Hall remodel, if we're lucky, the whole remodel. Also, don't forget, we're coming up on November 6th. That is the interchange ribbon-cutting ceremony. It'll be at 11:00 a.m. And I believe that's all I had. So, the next order of business is city council member comments. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, based, the ribbon-cutting on the third entrance, is there gonna be like a soft opening or are they gonna kinda move the barriers and let people start going some point, just to test it out before the ribbon-cutting?
To test it out?
Or whatever, you know, what I'd call a soft opening for a restaurant.
I was originally told that the, that it would not be open for, it would not be opened until that morning.
Oh, really?
Of the ribbon-cutting. I need to get back in touch with them to see if there are, if their contractors finishing sooner than was anticipated when we set this date.
Okay.
But last I heard, it wasn't supposed to be open until then.
I drove down there the other day and I guess last Thursday or something and they're, they're doing asphalt. I mean, it's, it's basically drivable, I think, but it's, you know, they haven't lined it or anything like that, so.
Yeah, they told me originally when we scheduled it that, uh, they're like, we could do the, you know, the ribbon-cutting and then you could drive across and you'll be the first one to drive across. And I said, well, surely someone's driven across it before me. I'm not like the guinea pig, right? So, I'm sure they'll test it before they just allow folks to come, and I could let you guys know if they're gonna, if it'll be open prior to the ribbon-cutting, I'll send a word.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tierney?
Speaking of the third entrance and also of social media, I saw on social media the other day that the county, since we're about to open up that third entrance, is talking about closing Short March Lane. Are y'all familiar with that?
Yeah.
Because I've driven it and, I mean, it's a very tiny little road, it's nothing that's ever gonna be a main thoroughfare, but it seems to me that since we're about to open up this large economic area, it seems strange to, for the, to close off a whole section. They'd have to drive quite a ways around to get to an area that we're trying to develop. And I was wondering if there's anything we can do to help them try to keep that road open.
It's a very broad question, if there's anything you can do. The county judge is asked, is considering closing it in the county, so we don't have jurisdiction over that. As to whether there's things you could do, I suppose you could call the, the county judge and we could protest. There's, there's a lot of things you could do, but nothing that the city as a governing body can do. This caught me off guard. I'd reached out to Mayor Watson who said he'd heard about it, but it was nothing ever planned or, nothing planned from the city. I've heard differing opinions as to why that connection was made to Short Marshay Road to begin with. Uh, I guess the room, the way it's being put out by the county is that it has always been planned to be closed. That is not the perspective that I had or that Mayor Watson had. We made that connection as a service to the folks that were there and it goes back to, probably even before Mayor Watson, when, to Judge Lines and Mayor Johnson. We haven't found anything that said that connection had to be there to qualify for any grants. But Judge Hyde is taking the stance, the plan has always been to close it. I don't know how or where they'll close it. If you go down, you can see the road's been spray painted at what I understand is the county line at this point. I don't have plans on cooperating. You may, you did mention, Councilmember Tierney, that there, that'll never be, you said something like, it's just a small road and it'll never be a throughway. Well, it's become a throughway. It's listed on the, when I checked last week, it was listed on the county's master roadmap, master street plan, as a collector, and it shows the connection there. So, it probably will be at some point a bigger road. Which brings up the discussion Judge Hyde had, told me this, he told, he's been telling the press, I think one of the concerns there is that that road isn't wide enough or built sturdy enough to handle through traffic that it'll be getting. I think there are concerns about the road falling apart, about trying to build that road up. The county judge is talking about, saying, well, if you guys want the connection open, you can just annex that area. I'd love to have that area in the city limits. I wouldn't like the liability of a road that's gonna need improvement, but that is maybe something that we could start talking about at some point in time. And then especially if the judge actually goes ahead and closes that road, what'll, what will actually happen? But those are just some of my meandering thoughts in response to that.
And you answered some of the questions I had, another part about the possibility of annexation. And when I said that, I didn't think it'd be a major road. I was referring to about how small the road is, how it's really not built for heavy traffic.
Correct, correct.
But it is quite a shortcut and also, if something ever happens on I-40, bam, you know, there's finally at least one exit out of the city. Because one thing with the new third entrance is not doing, right now, it's not connecting over to 365 MacArthur Drive, at least not yet. So, until that's done, I say, I'll see that we need to keep Short March in there until at least we do have another connection over to MacArthur.
Councilmember Scott?
So, just to follow up on that a little bit, we don't have any extraterritorial jurisdiction over that area so that we can't influence a decision?
Not over the roads, at least, not that I'm, we have extraterritorial jurisdiction over that, but I don't know that it deals with county roads. I don't think we can tell the county they can't close it. When I first heard of this, I said, there's no way the county's actually gonna close the road. And then I changed my tune after talking with Judge Hyde.
I have two unrelated things that I wanted to talk about, but I think they turned their lights on to talk about that, so they can do that and then I can do my other two things.
Okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Where do you think they'll close it off? Right there where the new asphalt is, it goes onto the third entrance?
Uh, I don't know.
Oh, you don't know? Okay.
Well, they'll, presumably somewhere in the county, but if you, if you go out there, you'll see that that county line is not in a good place for a turnaround. What used to happen is they actually extended into the city and, like, you could do your U-turns there, but it was in city and we didn't monitor it 'cause there was no throughway or road out there.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I've posed that question. I've heard barricades or just digging a ditch, but that'll put their service trucks driving down and having to reverse for a good amount back. So, I don't know, it'll be interesting.
But that is, that is interesting. There's been a lot of comments about security and things like that, just that that would cause another entrance to Mammell and, and if they close that off, then that basically seals, seals it off again, so.
Safety flooding.
But anyway, that's interesting. Thank you.
You're talking about another entrance for those residents?
Well, basically, basically, everybody could come in from 365 if they wanted to and come into Mammell through that route, through the Short Marshay, now they won't be able to anymore.
Correct, but they could still come in from the freeway or from 40.
Yeah.
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 Uh, Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. In response, Councilmember Tierney asked for suggestions on things to do. One, oftentimes, if you're promoting something and you want to be effective with it, if that item impacts safety and/or security, but safety, that makes it a stronger argument. MEMS, you might get ahold of MEMS or everybody could do this, 'cause you don't have to live on Short Marshay or in the county to do this. MEMS, I think it's the director of MEMS has expressed that he's very concerned about this because of his ambulance service. You know, it could endanger lives out in that area because we wouldn't be able to get to them in time. So, you might respond to MEMS, either letter, phone call, or, and I even heard that they're putting out a petition for, through MEMS.
Okay, cool.
So.
But I don't, yeah, you can reach out to MEMS. I don't, I think MEMS are, rumor has it and I don't know, I've heard it in the news and even that, I don't know what to believe, but my understanding is MEMS is not in favor of it, and so, reaching out to MEMS to let them know that you're also not in favor of it might not be as productive. And I've reached out to the Justice of the Peace. My understanding is it just comes down to a decision by Judge Hyde. But, yeah. Councilmember Scott?
Okay, I had two things. One is, what's the status of Station Two?
The, we've received one of the quotes for remediation and I got a text message from Chief Ezel, I see you moving, you wanna come update us on that? Actually, I see a reflection of you moving is more accurate.
Okay, so, latest update on Station Two? We've had five different companies come in, well, four companies and the state. We actually had the state HVAC inspector come in. We're waiting on his report. I've gotten one bid out of the three companies that we asked to come in for remediation so far. So, we're kinda at a standstill right now with that. I did ask the mayor today, I've been checking everywhere, trying to find some kind of a travel trailer to put inside of the bay there so we could live out of that, and I did find one and today he approved me to go ahead and look into that, so I've, actually already started talking to electrician to come in and do a temporary 30-amp service in the bay so that we can actually pull that thing in and it'll be ready to go.
Have we decided, I don't want it to sound so negative, but where the blame lies?
Uh, we have not. Like I said, I've had five different, you know, companies come in there.
Tell you what's wrong.
And five, five different reasons, so. I mean, it's, if we could get two to land on the same thing, I would think we might be making headway, but at this point, it's, you know, bunch of finger pointing back and forth and, you know, different ideas on what's actually causing the issue in there. We, I mean, we, we do understand it is an HVAC problem of some sort. We just have to get down to the bottom of that. I've got an AC contractor coming out towards the end of this week. That's the quickest he could get to us, but he's actually going to check all of the refrigerant levels in the mini-split unit, which is the little bitty unit that sits in our equipment room down there, and it's a, it's a significant portion of the cause to that, but he's gonna check the refrigerant levels on that just to make sure, because we've got a lot of condensation up in the attic. I mean, still, at this point, we've been out of there, Thursday will be a month, so. It will make me sleep a little bit better and feel a little bit better knowing that, you know, hopefully tomorrow night, if everything works out well tomorrow, I'll have people back in that station ready to respond, so.
So, at this point, the city's gonna pay for that? For the mitigation?
Yeah, well, so my goal, I think that if we just sit around and wait for everyone to agree on whose fault it is, we'll miss a good amount of time in the shop. So, I had asked Chief Ezel to go ahead with the remediation. We've got one quote in to just start fixing, we'll have to fix the cause along the way, but just get the, the current stuff out. There's a little bit of concern, I think, about cleaning it up before we've identified the fault and that it might make it more difficult to properly do that.
That is the one key thing that all five individuals did agree on is that we, we have to figure out and determine exactly what is causing the issue in that attic space. Otherwise, if we come in and we spend thousands of dollars to remediate this thing in six months, we're gonna have the same issue again, so. So, that is a major concern, but like I say, I appreciate the mayor, you know, giving us approval and tomorrow, if all goes well, I'm gonna go down and get that trailer and get it in there tomorrow.
Which was, just to reiterate, was brought up, I guess, by the, the comments made at the last council meeting. I got the impression, thankfully, that the, there was a strong push to get something there. There may be a budget resolution coming out. I think we're looking at four grand a month or something for them to be staged.
Thirty-seven fifty is what they quoted me today a month, so, and I'm hoping, a month, month and a half, we'll do it, but I wouldn't bet on it either.
I do understand that there was a pretty close call because of the time it took to respond to a baby.
We, we did have a situation and that, and that's my concern and why I'm really trying to push to get us back in there. and why I'm really trying to push to get us back in there as quick as we can. We did have a situation that's kind of one of those things that keeps me up at night, just not having people in the right spot. You know, I know, a lot of people, you know, don't understand, and I saw some comments on Facebook talking about two and a half miles difference, but two and a half miles is, is three to four minutes for us responding in a truck, and if you stop breathing, four to six minutes, you start to suffer brain damage, so. That is why we have the stations where we have them, so that's, that's why I want to get these people back in there so we can take care of our folks.
Good, I'm glad you're moving forward with that.
Anybody else?
My other question was also fire-related.
Shoot?
The old property on Millwood, what's happening?
That's not me. The last I heard, we had, yeah, nothing. I'll answer it direct and then get to the roundabout stuff. Last I'd heard, we, there were some issues about us not, maybe not being able to sell it or having to do certain things with that money. And then I believe when, we've got some update from the attorneys, that I haven't even read their opinion yet.
So as I understand the opinion we got most recently, that building was part of the bonds that have been passed down and refunded over the years, so that bond is not fully paid for. So what we would probably have to do with any proceeds from that sale is include those in the, I get them confused, revenue fund or bond fund for the bonds to be paid out of.
In their totality, wouldn't it just?
Well, and then once we've made the payments due for a certain period of time, some of those excess funds would probably be released to us. Now, that's the short, simple version. But at least for some period of time, they would be considered like other proceeds that were dedicated for that purpose. And then they, if there were excess funds in that fund, they might be released to the city.
Thank you.
Any other council member comments? Madam City Attorney?
No further comments.
Madam City Clerk?
I actually do. I have a question, I was working with Councilmember Mosley on something. I was wondering, have you guys ever considered receiving a link for the packets and the agenda? Is that, I just wondered if there was any reason why you're getting PDFs and Word documents? Because it just seems like it'll be a lot easier and cleaner, I didn't.
I don't have a problem with that, my problem is getting it downloaded when I'm here, so.
I'm working on that.
I still couldn't get it, even with your hotspot, I couldn't get it to download.
I'm working on that. And you guys don't have to make a decision, I was just wondering if that had ever been discussed prior to me? No, just something to kind of think about, so if you get it one day, you know, we can maybe try it and if it's not agreeable, then we can go back to the way it was. That was it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget meeting, I'm sorry.
What, who?
Apologize, next budget meeting, budget meeting.
Is still scheduled for whenever the next budget meeting is?
The week from yesterday, I think, or is it Monday?
Week from tomorrow.
Week from today?
It is still scheduled for the 29th at 6:00. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.